All right. Good evening once again, everybody. I am pleased to inform you that we do have a quorum. So, yeah. Thank you very much for everyone who came tonight. We really appreciate it. It helps us get our business done and not have to postpone it. And you can't imagine how important that is to keeping the town moving along. So, thank you. So, Town Clerk Kara Dayhill has advised me that we have a quorum of 75 voters. And I declare that a quorum being present, this annual town meeting, Part II, will be called to order at 7:37 PM on Wednesday, April 14, 2021. We're going to do a quick pledge allegiance, if you guys wouldn't mind standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. In the interest of time, I'm going to dispense with all the discussion of rules and so on and so forth. One thing that I do want to mention, that I want to address just based on a lot of what happened last night, is just to clarify what a point of order is. So, a point of order is procedural in nature. So, when you make a point of order, you're wanting to comment on the procedure that we're following. You might think that there's an error in procedure. And you don't want to interrupt somebody who's already speaking unless you think that allowing them to continue to speak will further that error. Otherwise, you should probably let that person finish speaking. So, we've had some instances where folks use a point of order as an opportunity to interrupt someone or to speak sooner rather than having to wait their turn. So, I just want to make sure that everyone's clear on that. It's procedural in nature. So, if you have any other comments or anything to add to the discussion, that would be debate and you would have to wait your turn. Okay? That's the only rule I want to discuss. So, we'll get right into it. So, last night, we left off with Article 17. And so, Article 17 is the surplus property to be sold to Massachusetts Department of Fish and Game. Do we have a motion?
I move that the town approve Article 17 as set forth in the warrant.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on Article 17. The vote on this article was five yes and zero no for the select board. And this article requires a two-thirds vote to pass. I believe Sarah has a few words on this.
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to start off by amending Article 17. I spoke with Joan Pierce, land agent with Fish and Game, who gave me some legal wording. So, on line eight, after the semicolon where it says "said conveyance to be subject to a restriction, that the property be retained in perpetuity in its natural," so on and so forth, that will be changed to read "said conveyance will ensure that the property be retained in perpetuity in its natural state," and so forth. And just real quickly, I'm going to read a brief thing from Ms...
Sarah, I'm sorry. Can you slow down a little bit? So, there's a motion to amend. Okay. So, we have a motion to amend to delete the words "said conveyance will be subject to a restriction"?
No, just to delete the words "to be subject to a restriction."
Okay. So, delete the words "to be subject to a restriction" and replace them with what?
Two words. "will ensure."
Okay.
And "ensure."
Okay. So, it will read "said conveyance will ensure that the property be retained in perpetuity," et cetera?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's a motion.
Okay. So, we have a motion to amend. And you've got the wording written down. Okay. Do we have a second? A motion to amend has been made and seconded. Sarah, do you want to say anything further on the amendment?
I'd like to, very briefly. So, the email I received from Ms. Pierce today says that Mass. Department of Fish and Game, if we convey this property, if we sell this property to them, they will acquire the 33-acre property, as it acquires all property, by a consensual, what's called a consensual order of taking, that brings the property automatically under protection of Article 97. So, this kind of consensual order of taking, where the town and Mass. Fish and Game agree to the sale, cannot be subject to a restriction. So, she advised me to take that wording out. It's line eight.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. So, we'll open that amendment for debate. Seeing no motion to the mics and no raised hands, all those in favor of the amendment to Article 17? All those opposed? The amendment passes with a majority vote.
Thank you.
Back to the main motion. Sarah, did you have some more on the main motion?
I do.
Okay.
I'm just blowing up this map. I know I jumped on it last night when we were all tired and forgot that it wasn't part of Article 16. But just briefly, the area that's outlined in orange is the 33-acre property. The town has owned... Wait. Sean, could I have that motion back again?
Yep.
Sorry. Made some notes on it.
Sure.
Thank you. So, the town took the property in 1991 by tax-taking, and the rights of redemption were forever foreclosed in 2008. So, this property has been town-owned property for quite a long time. It's outlined in orange. The orange crosshatching is priority habitat for endangered species. And the blue flecks are all wetlands. So, as you can see, it's about 99 point something percent wet. The entrance is wet from Meadow Street. So, to access it really from Meadow Street, you would probably need some sort of boardwalk. And essentially, as I said, it's been in town ownership now since 2008. So, what you see to the upper right is not property lines, but separate lines that Fish and Wildlife made for their own traversing the property. The land to the right with the teal green and the blue and the upland piece in the middle, that's all part of the Atwood Wildlife Management Area that Fish and Game bought. It was about 510 acres, and they bought it for $710,000 from the previous owner, A.D. Makepeace. So, my feeling here is that they've invested a lot. Fish and Game has invested a lot in the town already. They have their own in-house person who appraises property. They typically sell to towns between 200 and 600 an acre. So, they're offering us about 500 an acre, and they would be purchasing it for $20,000.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. We'll open it for debate. Yep, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Holmes, Red Tail Lane. So, my concern with this article is I recognize it's 33 acres of predominantly wetland. However, an appraisal was not done on the property. There was no licensed appraiser that assessed or determined what the value of the property was. The $20,000 price tag is what Department of Fish and Game is willing to pay for the property. It's the only amount of money, it's what's left in their funds for this current year to purchase the property. And if they were to spend more than $20,000 on any property, or had any interest in spending more than $20,000 on any property, they would have to do additional due diligence to determine whether the property was, whether the price was justified or not before they could purchase it. So, the $20,000 price tag that they are willing to pay for the property is a result of their desire to do less due diligence on what the property's worth, and it's directly tied to what they have available for funds. It's not at all attributable to what the property's worth. I understand 33 acres of swampland probably isn't too desirable to everybody in the room, but perhaps Inabahter would pay $21,000 for it and indeed restrict it, the same way it's currently protected. The town currently owns it, so nothing's going to happen to it unless the town or this body decides to do otherwise with it. So, it doesn't need to be protected by Fish and Game. It's already protected. The town already owns it. If the town was to sell it to Inabahter and decided that Inabahter decided to put a conservation restriction on it, it would still be protected. But we might get $30,000 from Inabahter for it. I just, I don't think it is good practice for the town to sell land to anybody without an appraised value of that land being done before you determine the price of the land. And that wasn't done in this case, and that's my only objection to it. We might do an appraisal and find out it's worth $10,000, and we were taking Fish and Game for an extra 10 grand. I don't know. But I think that's highly unlikely with 33 acres of land, and I think it's good practice that we always do an appraisal on land before we determine who we're going to sell it to and for what amount.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
May I, Mr. Clancy?
Yep.
So, a couple of points, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Corbo, but I believe under procurement law, the state, when they're buying property from a town, does not have to go to get three appraisals?
Through you, Ms. Moderator. Yes, that's correct. In this context, the law does not require that appraisals be obtained.
Okay. Thank you. And then, let me just reiterate that the town, the previous owner, gave up their rights of redemption when it was foreclosed in 2008. So, it's been over 20 years. It seems to me that if Inabahter wanted to buy the property, they certainly had ample time. And the other point is, if Inabahter did buy it and were able to get variances to put a house lot on it, for example, that would be a tax-negative house lot, undoubtedly, if it was a single-family house. And it seems to me that if we don't do this, we're out $20,000 that we wouldn't have had.
Thank you, Ms. Hewens. Yep, in the middle.
Hi, yes, I'm Elizabeth Salgar, and I live at 98 Meadow. Can you hear me? Hi, I'm Elizabeth Salgar, and I live at 98 Meadow Street. So, I'm not an exact Inabahter to this property, but I am a few lots over. I live probably four lots over from this. And I can tell you, I think that had me or any of my neighbors known that this was for sale, we may have been interested not to build houses, but to just to ensure that there was nothing else built behind our properties. I also feel like $20,000 is not a lot of money. This probably should be appraised. It's only $598 an acre.
Thank you. All right. On the right.
Steve Durs, 52 Forest Street. Maybe it's too obvious to mention this, but if this is preserved, then the neighbors wouldn't have any need to go and purchase the property because it would be preserved in perpetuity without your having to take any action on it. Second, although it's not a formal appraisal, I think we've seen that A.D. Makepeace is not naive about land values, and they sold a much larger parcel for slightly, in the same range per acre. It's not an appraisal, but I think it shows us that we're wasting our time if we want to go out and get an appraisal. The neighbors will live longer with the threat of potential development. We'll be out $20,000, and we won't have a guaranteed contiguous 600-acre parcel for water recharge or recreation, for all the things we want when we're buying land. We talked a lot about groundwater last night. We're not going to get good groundwater for free, but in this case, we might get good groundwater for a profit.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Clancy, there is one more thing I wanted to add that I forgot to say.
Okay. Just so you know, it's your second opportunity.
Okay. So, I did forget to point out that on the very upper right-hand corner, it's out of the picture here, but the Fish and Game land, that 510 acres, immediately abuts our Savory Avenue Conservation Land, which is another 50. And so, that's where the previous speaker got the 600 acres total that would be protected.
Thank you. Seeing no additional motion to the mics and no raised hands, we'll put this to a vote. This does require, again, a two-thirds vote. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All right. We're going to put this to a hand count because it is a two-thirds vote, so we've got to be very clear on this. Okay. So, all counters are just going to count the same areas that we counted last night. So, starting with all those in favor, please raise your blue card. And raise them up real high so those counters can see them. Thank you, guys. Okay. You can put your cards down. All those opposed, please raise your blue cards way up high.
But we can double-check, so add them together.
Yep.
And then divide by three. All right. So, 68 divided by three equals 22 times two equals... You needed 25 votes to...
We need 25. I thought it was divided by three times two, right?
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be 45?
42 plus 26, 68 divided by three.
Times two.
Times two.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 45. Okay. And you only got 42.
Yeah, okay. All right. We had 42 for, 26 against. The motion does not carry by two-thirds vote. Moving on to Article 18, Picnic Isle Land Acquisition. We have a motion?
I move that the town approve Article 18 as set forth in the warrant.
We have a motion and a second. Sarah, can you say a few words?
Thank you. So, this is Picnic Isle. It sits in the middle of Wenham Pond. And last year, at the 2020 town meeting, the town meeting voted to put the Wenham Shores Beach Recreation Area and Picnic Isle in a conservation restriction to be held by Mass. Fish and Game. Afterwards, we discovered that Picnic Isle didn't actually belong to the town. And so, what we've been advised by our attorneys, by our land use attorneys, is to take this by eminent domain. The former owner was Maguire Development Company back in the '60s. They're basically, towns unable to locate them. And passing this article will allow the town to acquire the property and record a restriction that will ensure Picnic Isle is protected forever under the conservation restriction held by Mass. Fish and Game, as town meeting wanted last year.
Thank you, Ms. Hewens. We'll go ahead and open it for debate.
Paul Kelly, 36 Leonard. I just, very quick on it, for the headline itself, for the Picnic Isle, I think acquisition is spelt incorrectly, and I didn't know whether that's just an organizational thing or whether it's something that actually gets filed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. On the left.
Alan Dunham, 11 Ricard Street. I understand with Ms. Hewens said that you couldn't find the previous owner, but at some point, if we take it by eminent domain, doesn't the town have to be able to pay a price for the eminent domain if somebody finally comes forward, even if it's two or three years down the road, and expect some form of money? So, has that been appraised, Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Hewens.
I will have to defer to town council on that question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. I did not hear that.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, through you to town council. If the town goes ahead and takes it by eminent domain, despite the fact that currently the former owner has not been found, couldn't there still, would the town still have a liability if that owner comes forward and says, "Oh, I want my money because you took my land by eminent domain"? And the follow-up question was, has it been appraised?
So, as to the, through you, Mr. Moderator, as to the second question, I don't know if it's been appraised or not. But as to the first question, yes, if the town does a taking by eminent domain, then the property owner does have rights under Chapter 79 to, you know, request compensation as a result of that taking.
Mr. Moderator, a quick follow-up through you to town council. Is there a time limit on that? If that owner comes forward, let's say in two or three years, would the town still be obligated to pay for that land that we took?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. There is a time limit. I don't know what that is off the top of my head, but it is not an indefinite period of time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I believe there's a question as to whether there was an appraisal as well. Can we answer that, or does anybody want to answer that?
No, there's been no appraisal, but there's also no money changing hands. This is just protecting it in perpetuity for the townspeople of Carver.
Excellent. Thank you. Sarah on the right.
Hi, Alan Maines, 148 Plumb Street. I have no opposition to the town obtaining the land. Given the circumstances, it sounds somewhat abandoned. I'm a bit curious about the use of eminent domain for this, especially given the mania currently for using such a process. Previous owner of the Maguire Development Company, he said can't be found, which is probably true. When did this fall off the tax rolls? Is there not an outstanding tax bill on this property? Couldn't it be taken as a tax seizure instead? Would that be more logical?
I'm not privy to that particular history. I mean, this goes back to the '60s.
This is a meg question. Through you, Mr. Moderator. I believe the town accountant knows a little bit more about this than I do, but it was my recollection from when we voted this last time that the town did do a taking for non-payment of taxes based on it being land of low value, but there was some defect in the procedure that was used at the time. And so, the purpose of authorizing this taking now is to ensure that the town has full and unimpeachable title to the property. So, the tax-taking process had already gone forward, but this is just to perfect the town's title. And again, that's my recollection from the last time that we were here, but again, I think Meg would be the better person to answer that question, or if the tax collector is here.
Now that he mentions it, that's my recollection, too.
It seems like it's an awful lot of unknowns here. I just feel like that the use of eminent domain goes against the purpose of eminent domain, which, I mean, I'm not saying that conservation is not a valid public purpose, but, you know, if we're building a highway or something, or building a school, it's one thing.
Well, this is a public purpose.
It is. As I said, I'm not disputing that, but I think, I would think that anybody in position of authority in the town of Carver would be looking to avoid the use of eminent domain and mentioning that very loudly. So, anyway, I think there's a lot of unknowns here, and I think we ought to think carefully about this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I appreciate that, but this was what we were advised to do by our land use council.
In the middle. Yep. Mr. Jermaine.
Alan Jermaine, 24 Pine. This came before Conservation Commission, which, when Fish and Game came before the committee, it involved no money. I'm going to turn around and face the audience. It involved no money, and we thought it was a good idea. The only issue I have with this is, once Fish and Game gets their teeth into this, Sarah just said it, this becomes public land. So, that means that the three parking spaces on Wenham, now if a nice family from Arizona decides they want to visit beautiful Wenham Pond and take their canoe out onto this little island, then they can. Now, we don't want to restrict that, but we don't want 47 cars on Wenham Road. So, I don't understand, it's not being used for anything right now. They're not paying us any money for it. Apparently, no one's paying the taxes on the island. I don't understand the gain by us, again, losing more control of property that we own and turning it over to somebody else.
Oh.
And I think there's a lot of unknowns in this entire process.
Is, that's procedural in nature, so...
Well, he made a misstatement. Is that procedural or not? Because we're not turning it over. We will retain ownership.
You can't argue him...
Okay.
You'll have to do it in debate.
I beg your pardon.
So, it'll count towards your debate limit.
Sure.
She's right. I misspoke. It'll be under the control of, we'll keep ownership, but Fish and Game's going to be able to be part of it.
Protection.
They came and, we can protect it ourselves. We don't really need Big Brother, in my estimation.
Sarah, you have to let him speak, and then you can correct him later. Otherwise, it just, it gets really hard to...
You're right. I apologize.
My name is Joanna Layton. I live at 4 Wenham Shores Drive, 47 years in the town. If you're here and been in the town, this is a long-lasting... in the town. If you're here and been in the town, this is a long-lasting development. It requires Wenham Shores, Cranberry Circle, and Edgewood. You need to know that the town administrator that we had earlier decided he needed money, and so he gathered up all these properties that were in tax title. There was a sign put on there, on that top of the property, that it was going to be auctioned off. In addition to that, the picnic isle, which is only worth about seven thousand dollars, was titled as land of low val, of land of low value. It was taken by the town, but they made a mistake, and they didn't follow through with it. John Maguire, who built our development of seventy-four homes, is dead. His company no longer exists. So whatever you think about picnic isle, that's part of our, if I was to show you the map of the subdivision, that recreation area, which is one point oh-three acres, and the yellow one, which is picnic isle, is very small. Last year, we were in this town meeting, and we had the article put together, as our lawyer says. It was passed, no problem, a hundred percent. But for some reason, KP Law, when they were looking at it, found that the picnic isle was not taken correctly. And they didn't want to auction it off because we will lose it. If you auction a piece of property that was tax titled, you would have to, and it was done incorrectly, you have to put it into auction. The reality is, we would be losing it because if somebody bought it, they could do whatever they wanted with it. It wouldn't be part of what we have today, picnic isle. I'll tell you, if you want to come to Wenham Shores and you want to go there fishing, unlike what he says, what Alan said, if people come from out of town, it's a public property. I would like you, if you fish, you come to Wenham Shores and you go down there and fish and enjoy yourself. Today, we have picnic isle, and we need to, let me say this again, we have the recreation area, which is good. You voted for it, that's fine, and we need to add on the picnic isle to make it a complete package. We're going to go with fishing game, and we've already presented to the Concom, as well as the Selectment. We will be going with fishing game to prepare, and we already have the draft of the conservation restriction. Joan Rivers, Joan Rivers, I call the Joan, Joan Richards, is it Joan Richards? I got to make sure I'm right.
Pierce.
Oh, Pierce, sorry. She's ready to work with both the Selectment and the Concom with that draft. Now, what Alan said, the restriction would be, yes, there is three parking spaces as you come down to go fishing. But it's like any place. You go to Sampson's Pond, or you go to John's Pond, and it's the same kind of thing. It's a restricted area. People have to park. Sometimes they park where they're not supposed to park, but I can't visualize seeing three hundred people, or thirty people, or whatever. It's pretty private. So I wanted to make sure that you all understood what we're doing. I also wanted you to understand what happened to that situation, and I want to tell you, we almost lost it because it was going to be auctioned off, and the town administrator needed his money. I wanted you to remember that, too. But we were lucky, they pulled it, because we, as people, or neighbors, I should say, along with Mr. Townsend and Sarah Hewens, supported us and encouraged us to keep going. And the article was written, and I want to remind you, it was all passed last, in September. If anybody has any questions, I gladly answer them if I'm allowed to. I don't know.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no further motions on the mics and no raised hands, we'll go ahead and put this to a vote. So on Article eighteen, picnic isle land acquisition, this requires a majority vote, and I did not read the vote, the committee vote, so bear with me one moment here. Picnic isle land acquisition was voted five yes and zero no by the select board. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion passes by a majority vote. Moving on to Article nineteen, cedar swampland donation. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I move that the town approve Article nineteen as set forth in the warrant.
I have a motion and a second. I believe Ms. Hewens has a few words on this.
Thank you. What you see here is the assessor's sheet for the Great South Meadow Cedar Swamp. It's a very confusing map. It's not the fault of the current Board of Assessors, I might add. It's just been that way for a long time. It's how the cedar swamp was chopped up way back, way back when. The parcels in sort of pinkish-purple there, I marked by hand just to show you that they correspond with the numbers of Mr. Shore's lots that he would like to donate. So it's assessor's map, MIS, or one-two-five-oh, I think is the other number, lots thirty-four through thirty-nine. And while I'm seeing this, I realize there is no, the map number has been actually left off the warrant. So I guess at some point we probably need an amendment there. At any rate, he would like to donate this land, and I want you to know that the Great South Meadow Cedar Swamp, if you don't already know, is populated by Atlantic white cedar. And it's actually, Atlantic white cedar is a globally threatened ecosystem. It's considered that way by Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. So we're, if we do accept this, we'll be protecting that species, but a huge watershed, that whole swamp is about five, six hundred acres.
Thank you, Ms. Hewens. We'll go ahead and open it for debate. On the left.
Yes, my family and I recognized fifty years ago that water was gold to our town, and our town has always been good to us for the last fifty years. So we've been tossing this around, what is the best thing that we can do for our town, and we all came up with the conclusion that it would be protection of the water. When we built our house in South Meadow Road, I don't know how many years ago, a lot, before Craig was born, before your father was born? No, I don't know. But we had a water problem. I sent it out for analysis, and it was high in nitrates, and that really hit at home to us, that the water was so, so critical. Come to find out, just down Abutigus, which is now Vana Estates, they were dumping their sewage trucks in that area, causing the high nitrates in the water, which eventually dispersed. So we're all in protection, and we want to get this going with the cedar swamp, because this is a great part of our town and our life. I know that city people, they just open the faucet and figure the water's going to come out, but that's not the case with us. They also have testing done at their particular tower sites, and we have our own testing done. So this is our life. Like I say, we just wanted to get this ball rolling, and maybe other people would follow through. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no further motion to the mics and no hands raised, we'll go ahead and put this to a vote. This does require a majority vote. Select board voted five yes and zero no. All those in favor? All those opposed? Guys have it, the motion carries unanimously. And we're going to take just a brief break here from the motions, and Mr. LaFon has a few words that he would like to say.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to the body, I think people here don't know what it takes to put together an event like this, a town meeting. It's very multifaceted, from making signs for chairs to printing warrants, very, very highly professional activities, drafting warrants, drafting warrant articles, instructional explanations for these articles, tremendous amount of interaction with department heads, boards, committees, and town council to get this right. And in my twenty-something years, nobody does it better than Elaine Weston. So Elaine, would you mind coming on down here for a moment, and Mr. Germain would like to, and his wife would like to present you with something? If you're too bashful, I understand, but... Take it out of the bag. Take that out of the bag, it would probably be...
I do like getting people back, so that's fine.
I drive Elaine crazy, so everybody knows.
Into the mic, Alan.
Really? Like, nobody can hear me? We drive her crazy. Send her email after email after email with correction after correction after correction, and pleading and begging, and can you do this for me, and can Shelby do this for me, and we need a favor, and she answers the reply immediately. She gets right back. And there's nothing that we have ever asked of this fine lady, that she has said, "I can't help you". So the success of the Finance Committee, the success of the Conservation Commission, the success of really everything that goes on in the town administrator's office, because he doesn't do anything, all goes to this lady right here.
I delegate very well.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much. I just want to say that you guys all make it easy because everyone is so great to work with, and you won't find finer coworkers, department heads, bosses, et cetera. So thank you all.
Mr. Moderator, for the record, that's my wife who came back, and she ran out. She was in the ladies' room, she took this advantage, and that's Jean. So Jean stopped and got the flowers on the way here tonight. So thank you, sweetheart.
Thank you. Thank you, Elaine. I can attest to the fact that she's always one step ahead, and she always knows exactly what we need. So it's really, she's a fantastic resource. Excellent, all right. Moving right along here, folks. We're moving on to the zoning articles here. So Article twenty, we have amend section thirty-five-eighty. Before I go forward with this, actually, I have one little bit of business to take care of. So there is a landowner who is affected by this article, who has requested that they be allowed to have someone who is not from town speak, if needed, may not be necessary. The gentleman's name is Lucas Faria. He's from Galehead Development, a company that is working on a solar project in town. So unless there's any objections, I'm going to allow this individual to speak should the occasion need to arise. Okay, seeing no objections, then we will allow that to proceed. Okay, so moving on, Article twenty, amend section thirty-five-eighty, large-scale ground-mounted solar voltaic installations. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Bruce Mackey, ninth Thatcher Street, Planning Board Chair. I move that the town approve Article twenty as set forth in the warrant.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do you have some sort of presentation, sir?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yes, this should be an easy one. We got, let me just go through. I know there's a lot in the summary here, so I'm just going to kind of go, just quickly go over some points. So this particular article combines ground-mounted and dual-use regulations. Right now, we have regulations for ground-mounted, which came first, and we have regulations for dual-use. And so this clarifies language for the small-scale solar projects of less than two-hundred-and-fifty megawatts. And this adds a new dimensional table, which we didn't have before, so it was confusing to go from one bylaw to the other for the ground-mounted and the dual-use. So Jim Walsh, a planner, came up with the dimensional table, and this makes setback requirements for both uses the same. And so this didn't change any of the setbacks. It changed one setback, and it actually made it greater, so that the ground-mounted agreed with the dual-use, and the dual-use had a greater setback in one particular case. So we made the ground-mounted, we gave it that greater setback. It allows the planning board to waive frontage requirements in certain cases. And in this particular thing, what's happening is, is that, you know, people come to the planning board, and or they speak to me or Jim, and they're, a lot of people don't want to see the solar projects. So the planning board thought that if there are lots in town that don't have the correct frontage requirements, and so, but they do have access to the property through easements. A lot of these easements are used for cranberry bogs, for cranberry growers. So we thought, in order to have some of these solar projects put into more remote places, that if we could adjust the frontage requirements, that would be a good thing. And this also clarifies the language about abudders affidavits, and I think one of the problems with the abudders affidavit were, if we could, if we had a solar project that came into town, and it, if the neighbors signed affidavits for a lesser setback requirement to their property, they can do that, but if one neighbor objected to that, then all the, then that particular solar project couldn't come about. I don't know if that was the reason that, I think that was kind of miswritten in the bylaw. So what this does, it allows, if people want to lessen their setback and sign an affidavit for that, that's fine. If a person does not want that to happen, they can still maintain the full setback from their property. So, and this addresses the sale, and we've had a problem with some of the solar projects in town. Somebody comes in and they build the solar project, and then sells it to another solar company to run. So we didn't have anything to address that. This has caused some problems with some of the solar projects we've had in town. So what this particular part of the article addresses is that the, when someone else buys a solar project, they have to come before the planning board and address that they're the new owner or transferee, and talk with the planning board about how they're going to operate, or how they're going to build this project. So there's no confusion between the first developer and the second developer. So that's what I have to say. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
Thank you, sir.
Alan Germain, twenty-four Pine. What Bruce said is absolutely correct. I'm personally involved with a resident that this is happening to. So they come to conservation, they come to planning, they go to zoning Board of Appeals, they jump through all the hoops and ladders and shoes and get all the approvals, and then sell the paper. They don't build anything. Then the new guy comes in, and now, six months, a year later, a year and a half later... Then the new guy comes in, and now, six months, a year later, a year and a half later, development starts. And then it turns out that it's not really like what was approved. But by that time, a lot of the project is completed. So, now what? Take it out? We have a particular case going on right now where the landowner himself is adamant about this is not what was approved. Put in what was approved, or remove it. And, of course, that's getting pushback from the people that have put the stuff in. So, they're going to fight this. And this is not right. This is not fair. It's just, and that's the whole bottom line with this entire change. It's not fair. It's not fair to the owner of the property in any way. In this particular instance, if this was the design that was proposed to him, he would never have entertained it. So, that being the case, I worked with Sarah and Planning Board and Connie Shea, I mentioned it too, on the Bylaw Review Committee, that this needed to be put in and enforced. So, this, like we get all of our bylaws, so that this can't happen again. And we're hopefully going to try to do something about it not happening this time.
Thank you, Mr. Germaine. I'm not sure who was first...
You can go, it's all good.
Okay.
Hi, Liz Taylor, 31 Russell Truffant. I became involved in sort of the whole Carver solar system when the James Breach Project was introduced. And for anyone who doesn't understand what the James Breach Project was, is a company came in and decided that we are going to build a solar farm in your backyard. I've been a resident of Carver for 40 years. I have a family here. I bought a home here. I grew up here, in my parents' backyards, in my neighbors' backyards, without notice. We were notified by the town to come to a Concom meeting where this was introduced. When we think about these projects, and we think about the town itself, Carver is a gorgeous town. We're dumping these silver cities in the middle of our town. The setbacks, as they're proposed here, I don't believe are enough. There's a recent article that was just, a study that was just completed by the University of Rhode Island, that states that solar farms reduce home values, for a home to be placed within one-tenth of a mile from a solar farm reduces the value by 7%. Now, you think about the homes that are typically placed on bogs or budding the bogs. Those homes in this market are going for about $600,000, I would say easily, if not more. That's a $42,000 resident cost deduction in the value of their home by allowing these farms to be placed literally in backyards, 200 feet. Now, that's, 100 feet is what you're supposed to stay back from a bus. 200 feet is the variance that's being proposed, with the ability to decrease it to 12 and a half to 50. 50 feet from your property line, you could have a fence with a huge solar farm behind it, taking the place of the property that you originally intended to purchase. I think that we have to do something about these laws, these bylaws, to protect our town, to protect the integrity of what, in the character of our town. I do have an amendment that I'd like to introduce that says that the setback for any...
Can we just take a look at it first, and then we'll let you make the amendment, just so we can help you edit it if you need to?
The only setback that's changing is this one, the lease.
I don't like this. This new? I don't know what this says.
It would just be the change. Then the minimum setback. But it maintains the 100%.
You're just changing this number from 200 to what?
To 550.
I mean, it's, it's a question of...
I think it's to help protect property values, and the question is if it's actually, is it 7% decrease in any homes that are budding?
No, I understand. I understand what your argument is. And I guess I should say this to everyone, and then he can decide. It's a procedural issue only, okay? So, through you, Mr. Moderator, we have a proposed motion to amend on page 16 of your There's the table of dimensional requirements, and the proposal is to change the 1 to 3rd row down, front side and rear setbacks from 200 feet in the RA zone to 550 feet. And the question to you, Mr. Moderator, is whether or not that is within the scope of what was published in the warrant, as well as what was the subject of the Planning Board's public hearing on this proposed zoning change.
Right. So, as we can see in the table here, that number is not bolded, so that means that that number is not being changed as part of this warrant article. There are several other changes in this warrant article that would be amendable, in my opinion. But because that item is not being changed, and we've not given anybody any notification that that item would be getting changed, I would say that that's out of scope. We would need to, you know, similar to how the person who drafted this article did, we would have needed to have had that included in the article, or in a future article. And you'd be welcome to do that, to work with the Select Board, or to gather the required signatures, to get an article on a future warrant that would include that particular change. But the entire, in my opinion, the entire bylaw does not become in scope just because of a few changes that are being made to that particular bylaw. Thank you.
Yeah, on the left.
Jen Bogart, 116 Cranberry Road. I have a motion also.
Okay.
What page?
14.
You do have some items here that are in bold as well. So, these items here, you're saying are the exact same wording as what? I have a table that's a new table. I have a table that's, this thing table, that has one small change in it.
You can look at the proposed bylaws, like from the first paragraph, the part 38. The footnotes 2 and 3 from table...
So, yeah, I think that some of this suffers from the same problem that the last one did. And that is that, when the Planning Board held the public hearing, and the Select Board pushed the warrant, they notified the voters that certain sections were going to be changed.
I just don't want it in your backyard, literally. I don't want it in my backyard. Yeah. The veterans that have gotten screwed with these things, you're next. This is where it's really tricky.
These footnotes 2 and 3 can't be pertaining just to the bold parts, because the bold parts don't exist right now, and 2 and 3 does.
Yeah, it's...
But these are not, these are not new language, with the exception of this...
That's what they tried to do on James Breach. They went around and said, "How much do you want? How much do you want?" And we said, "No." Because it's not happening.
So, you're saying without screening, in essence, yes, it's allowed.
Yeah. Which shouldn't be, which...
Never be allowed. But if you delete the new, bolded language, doesn't that take care of your issue?
No.
The challenge is that we just, we can't delete anything that's not, that's not being proposed to be changed.
I don't know what the one I gave...
Well, so, I mean, I get that, right? Because we have this whole bold thing here, and that you're basically saying you don't want to do that. Okay, and that's fine. You know, at least procedurally, it's fine. I guess what I'm not quite getting is how that ties into the footnotes that already exist. Okay, so, let's see if we can find that. Like footnote 2 doesn't, why, it says "any direct abutters in an RA zone."
You're saying, if we look up the zoning bylaws right now, it's going to say "all" in there. Note 3 also says "any..."
Let me see what the...
I can't wait till 4:45.
It's right, so we don't end up untangling it.
She took a nap today. So, just to delete that, that any small scale must comply?
So, this is 30.
So, just amended to say that they might take out the bolded language, that it must comply? I think all solar projects, all of them. I think ground-mounted changes the game. We just don't know what happens with it, I think.
I'm not even seeing that chart.
It's a new table. Many years down the line. It's carcinogenic, yeah.
So, this whole table is new?
Yeah, it's not recyclable. It's just too expensive.
Yeah. And then all the footnotes are new too, then? Okay.
I forget who I said that to, and he was...
All right, let's open this up to debate on everything.
Open this article?
Yeah, I mean, open up her question, okay? Because I think that others need to hear what we're talking about.
I don't have that thing.
Can we just hold on to her for a minute? Yeah, just so that we can try to explain.
Do I have to cite what I'm saying?
You will, but we'll give it back to you before then. Okay? I'm sorry?
I guess I'm going to explain what our challenge is right now.
It's a bathroom break.
Do you want to say something about it?
Well, I think we need to ask Mr. Mackey what exactly is going on here.
Sorry, Mr. Moderator. Are we having a private meeting up front here?
The, what we try to do is, we try to review the amendment to make sure that it legally makes sense, so that we're not trying to unravel that on town meeting floor, okay? So, we're helping the amendment maker make their amendment. And so, the challenge that we're running into right now is that we don't want to, we don't want to have someone make an amendment on something that's not being changed, that we're not proposing to change to begin with, okay? And so, the amendment that's being proposed would remove some of the bolded language in section 3580.25.1, which is procedurally fine. But then the question comes into play that they would also like to remove footnotes 2 and 3 from table 3580.25.1.1 on page 17 of the warrant. And presently, those items are not bolded, except for one footage number, the 25 to 50 in item 2. So, we'd like to perhaps have Mr. Mackey comment on that, and kind of tell us what's new and what's old here, so that we can better make a decision. So, I guess the first question would be, is table 3580.25.1.1 new, or is it, was that existing? Because the only thing that's bolded in there is the number 50 for minimum setbacks with RA waivers.
So, you're talking about page 17, labeled number 2?
Well, page, starting with page 16, the table on page 16. Oh, all right, my copy is different. I apologize.
Okay, yeah, okay. Well, that 50 was, it was 50 for dual-use, and 25 for ground-mounted. So, when we tried to make the regulations... So, when we tried to make the regulations setbacks the same for both, we actually went to the larger setback, which was for the dual use.
So
So that, so that now applies to dual use and ground mounted.
So is that, is that the only change here or are, are all the other numbers in this table changes as well?
Yeah, if, 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 Mr. Moderator, if Jim Walsh, the, the town planner, he was the one that changed these tables, maybe he could better answer.
Right. So the table itself is taking information that was in the text and laying out in a tabular form so it's easy for people to see what the setbacks are.
Okay.
And during one of our public hearings, one of our members wanted to increase the setback to go down in the RA where it says fifty, the highlighted one. So that was changed, I believe, from twenty-five to fifty. And then, the rest of these setbacks were already approved setbacks in previous amendments of the in the twenty nineteen approved changes to the
So, so the table is
Through you, Mr. Moderator?
Yeah.
But is this table in the bylaws right now?
This table is not in the bylaw, in the current bylaw.
It's not in the current bylaws?
That's correct.
Dimensions are.
The dimensions are in the bylaw.
Dimensions are. But the dimensions are. They're just not in table form, but all of this tabled information is in the bylaws. We don't have, it's not drawn out in a table. To simplify.
And then I guess the other question would be, is, are the footnotes new? Or did, did they, did that language already exist? I'm assuming that they're new because the table's new.
Well, the table's new, but the footnotes were based on information in the, in the current bylaw. But again, those should have been bolded.
That, well, and so our, our amendment maker is challenging that because there is a language in these footnotes pointedly in item two and item three that say, "Any direct abutters," which the previous bylaw did not say anything about any direct abutters. It said, "All direct abutters."
Through you, Mr. Moderator. You know, I have some concerns with the way that this motion is being presented because it's moved as printed in the warrant. And what the warrant says is that, "To see if the town will vote to amend section thirty-five eighty of the Carver zoning bylaw titled Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar-Voltelic Installations, as shown below with deletions shown in strike through and additions shown in bold." But now we're learning that there are additions that are not shown in bold. And so, you know, there's substantial risk here that voters did not look at this warrant and understand what, what was being added
Right.
and what was already there. It, it might be better, Mr. Moderator, if someone were so inclined that this matter be referred back to the planning board for further study at this point.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. These, these, these articles really need to be clear. They need to be really clearly laid out to make sure that people understand what's, what's being proposed, okay? It's unfortunate that this wasn't caught before town meeting, but that's sort of what we're left with, so.
Someone's got to make that motion to refer, I wouldn't agree with you.
Okay, so, so the, so the recommendation would be to, to have someone motion to, to refer this to the planning board for additional study? I, I can't make that motion, so.
So I, so I'm sorry about the confusion. So I'd like to, because there is confusion here, let me, I'd like to postpone this to the next, make a motion to postpone this with
So, so
If I could, through you, Mr. Moderator. So, this is a zoning bylaw, which means that if there is a negative determination here, it cannot be brought back to the meeting for two years unless it has a positive recommendation from the planning board. However, a motion to refer the matter to the planning board for further study is not a negative recommendation. So if someone were inclined to make a motion to refer to the planning board for further study.
Cornelia Shea, one forty-eight Plymouth Street. I'd like to make a motion to refer this back to the planning board for further study.
Thank you.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Does that require
Majority. It's a majority.
But is it, does it allow debate?
No, I don't know.
Was it referred to what you made?
Absolutely right.
Yeah.
They read Going to be amended. Second case.
Do we really need to debate it at this point? Commit or refer?
Oh, where's that?
It's ninety-six, commit or refer? It is debatable.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. We'll open that for debate. Seeing no motion of the mics and no hands, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Uh, yeah, you can have it back.
Where are they? I think he's
Oh, I have them. No, you can have them.
That makes sense, right?
Yeah. Yep. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to Article twenty-one, solar canopies. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move that town approve Article twenty-one as set forth in the warrant.
A motion made and seconded in Article twenty-one. Do you have a presentation, sir?
Yes, the two, two thousand nineteen annual town meeting approve Article seventeen, which was the lease of air rights over the town-owned land for solar canopies. So, this proposed amendment would amend the zoning bylaw to allow the solar canopies as a second principal use so that any electrical power generated may be sold to the electrical grid if the power generated could not be used locally due to existing power agreements.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open it for debate.
I'd just like to make as a point of reference that to date, zero kilowatt hours have been sold to the town. You're not seeing a return. You can see that in your ever-source bills, I'm sure, as they climb month to month to month. We are not getting any deals with these deals. Just to be clear. We, as residents, do not make out in these deals. And these are deals that we will be dealing with for thirty years, forty years, because these panels contain lead, cadmium, known carcinogens. And what happens to them when they're decommissioned? They are not recyclable. Nobody wants them. It's too expensive. They're a mess. They're a pain in the neck. They're heavy. They don't transport well. They don't recycle well. So just to be mindful of these things as we sort of make decisions about where they go. In your backyard. At the playground. At the school. At town-owned properties.
Thank you. Sir?
Well, the benefit to the town is, is not the electricity that goes out. The benefit to the town is the lease that the town has with the solar developer. And it, and as we were looking at these at the last town meeting for the, for the fires, for the police station and for the school, the other benefit to the town is that this is a shelter for the cars. So the police cruisers would go underneath these. And, and these are in parking lots around the Massachusetts. Some of the MBTA parking lots have shelters for cars, the solar panels overhead. Some colleges have them. Stone Hill College has solar panels and they, they use them and use those in the parking lot, so. So, so that's the benefit to the town. It's not the electricity. I mean, we thought at the beginning that there may be something that we could do with the buildings that we have in town, but then we found out that there are already solar agreements to a lot of the public buildings in town.
Thank you. All right, sir.
Hey, Ben Dexter, one forty-nine High Street. I'm just curious if we have any sort of figures or any sort of estimated revenue amounts that the town would be expecting as a result of something like this, what the potential is as far as revenue coming in? I don't know if it's too speculative at this point in time, but I don't know if that's a question anybody's able to answer.
Does anyone want to answer that? Sir?
Jim Walsh, town planner. Right now it'll be too speculative. We're working with a solo consultant who's looking at, you know, coming up with plans to put these sites out to bid. And a lot of it is, there are many, many variables that go into it. You know, the cost of steel for the, you know, the parking, parking canopies, the size of it. Whether or not certain departments want them on, on the roofs of their buildings. So, that's all factored in as part of it. So, we're working with that consultant. They're going to come up with some proposals. We're going to meet with the various departments to figure out what the different departments would want. I know, I keep on hearing from the school department that they would like something for the bus, you know, bus canopies so that when it snows, the buses, you know, there's no snow on top of the buses. But there's kind of a lot that goes into it, you know? Some people, they say, "Well, why isn't, why aren't these solar panels generating electricity for the town buildings?" The town already has net metering agreements in place. And if you breach one of those agreements, then the town has to make up that revenue source to the, you know, private company that the agreement is with. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, gentlemen. On the left, sir.
Alan Dunham, eleven Ricard Street. Reading this especially in paragraph thirty-five ninety point two zero locations, even if the town meeting does approve this amendment to the bylaw, we do get another chance because it states in here, "Proposed locations shall be approved at town meeting." So, they're going to have to come back to town meeting again for any location where they want to put something like this. I just want to get that clear.
Thank you. Mr. Germain?
Alan Germain, twenty-four Pine. We went over the budget and I found it odd that we built a brand-new police station with electric heat. And if solar was so wonderful, no solar. We have a gas line that's out in the street, but we put electric heat in the building and electric air conditioning in the building. And, and I just thought that was bizarre. And when Mr. Walsh just mentioned net metering agreements, I believe we plugged in an additional eighteen thousand dollars into the electric bill this year to cover the cost of the police station. And that's a complete unknown because we have no idea what it's going to cost. So, and I'll speak for Middleborough, who their first light bill of their first month in their brand-new police station was nine thousand dollars. So we don't know what's going to happen. And I just find it odd, there is, apparently the net metering agreement isn't working so well for our electric costs in the town, which I think we budgeted two hundred thousand this year for. Two hundred thousand. And that's with the LED light bulbs in the street.
Thank you, Mr. Germain. Mr. Shea?
Mr. Moderator, through you. Just to clarify, the town meeting did approve certain locations previously for solar canopies, including the elementary school, the high school, the police station, the fire station, the library. And I believe town hall and the DPW department. So we have approved almost all municipal locations at this time. And this solar bylaw is so that the town can move forward at this when the town feels that the time is right to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Seeing no further motion to the mics and no raised hands, we'll go ahead and put this to a vote. It does require a two-thirds vote. The vote by the select board
To the mic.
Oh, sorry, no, no action taken. The select board. All those in favor?
Mr. Moderator, just, I apologize.
We've already put it to, we've already moved to a vote.
Oh, I had my, I'm sorry, I was trying to raise my hand.
I'll, I'll
So, just to clarify what he stated, what Mr. Shea just stated. If we vote yea, those projects will go forward in the entire center of town. At the high school, elementary school, library, DPW. Just to make that clear, that the entire projects have already been okayed based on we vote that we can go forward with these canopies. Is that what I'm understanding?
If I, if I could just briefly, Mr. Moderator. To date, there are no, this is allowing for this to happen. The town would have to go through a process, probably an RFP process. The town would have to, through, through the select board, would have to specifically approve a project at a particular location. Just because it's allowed doesn't mean it's going to happen. So, for instance, the select board may decide that, that they, they don't want a solar canopy over at the police station, just as an example. Just because it's allowed doesn't mean it's going to happen. And if it is going to happen, there has to be a process to go through to get the, the correct developer at the correct price to do a project. So, so these haven't been approved. The only thing that's being
But they're in the work.
Ask for approval is the location, is the locations, which for my time, the Mr. Shea said those locations have already been approved. But that doesn't mean that a project's going to happen there. It just allows for it.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll go ahead and put this to a vote. Again, two-thirds vote is required. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, we'll go to a handicap. Counters come forward, please. Again, we're going to count the same sections as last time. All right, so first, all those in favor, please raise your blue cards way up high. All right, you can put your cards down. All those opposed, please raise your blue cards way up high. Hey, we have thirty-six yes, twenty-five no. The motion does not carry by two-thirds, two-thirds vote.
Thirty-six in what? I'm sorry?
Thirty-six yes and twenty-five no, sir.
Does that mean we need a quorum count, Mr. Moderator?
Not everybody in the room is required to vote. Article twenty- Article 22, Floodplain District, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article 22 as set forth in the warrant.
Okay, I have a motion made and seconded on Article 22, Floodplain District. Do you have a few words, sir?
Yes, the Federal Emergency Management Agency has updated the Plymouth County Flood Insurance Study Report and the Plymouth County Flood Insurance Rate Maps. The Commonwealth and Massachusetts National Flood Insurance Program Office has requested that the town amend Section 3700 of the Floodplain District bylaw to reflect the updated flood insurance study and flood insurance rate maps. And this is something that happens, like, every five years, the flood maps are updated because, for one of the reasons, climate change and just the change of the runoff of water in certain areas of town because of pavement and whatever.
Thank you, sir. We'll go ahead and open it for debate. Seeing no motion on the mics and no hands, this requires a...
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds vote, and I believe there was no action taken by the select board. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Article 23.
Point of order, sir. Terribly sorry, can I get a quorum count? A lot of people have left.
Right. Don't know if we have a quorum.
Can we have the counters?
One.
Forward.
It's on the text.
Sir, could you just please be seated just for a moment while we do this? All right, I'm going to ask everybody to raise your blue card real high.
Wait, does he have to make a motion? Oh, no, he doesn't.
So you're mine, I got an extra.
Everybody who's here raising...
A resident, you're a resident.
I was going to say, if you're here, then you're here.
There's no stamp on me.
No.
I'm not mine. We have it.
Okay.
20? Alan.
You didn't get me, did you get Sarah?
Eddie and I were chatting. You were chatting me.
I see that we have one voter sitting in the non-voter section in the back there, so would you mind coming forward and sitting down in the lower seats?
Is that the key number?
It could be.
I challenge that, I don't believe that. Seriously? Honestly, seriously? Because I don't want this to wind up in court, when we can prove that there wasn't a quorum. Somebody decides they want to fight these solar bylaws.
Yeah, we're going to count again because it is really close.
Yeah.
Okay, so everybody, again, raise your blue card real high.
I don't believe it.
Is he like drinking beer up there? I mean, why the hell would you sit right there? I don't know. Yeah, the beer cans rolling down, nothing to make the... Get it in! Oh, raise your hand if you're not here.
That's right.
Close again, 65. Someone in the back.
Nobody go to the bathroom?
Yeah, yeah.
Lock the doors.
Please stay.
Where are we right now? I think it's 23, right?
We're on Article 23.
Okay.
Which is literally the last article. Nope, sorry, we have one more.
Well, we have 24, too.
24.
Okay, Article 23, Mr. Moderator, I move the town approve Article 23 as set forth in the warrant.
Okay, so I have a motion made and seconded on Article 23, Non-Medical Marijuana Overlay District. There was no action taken by the select board on this article, and it requires a two-thirds vote to pass.
Okay, the planning board voted 5-0. And this would allow the retail cultivation and processing in both North and South Non-Medical Marijuana Overlay Districts. The current bylaw has cultivation and processing only in North Carver and retail sales only in South Carver. So, you know, the planning board has been approached, or the planning department has been approached by different people looking for properties, and some of them wanted to combine both the retail and the growth, or the retail and the processing. And since we already have one store that's going to sell in South Carver, we just thought that it was a good idea to, we only can have two, and to be able to put the other store, if somebody finds a place to put it in North Carver, because it just kind, sounds kind of silly to have two stores in a small district in South Carver. I don't know if that would ever happen. And I know when we first did this bylaw, when we first wrote it, the last planner was thinking that we'd do the processing and growth in North Carver because of the well that we have there, and he didn't think that at the time, that there was enough water for growth and processing in South Carver. But since then, we've had people come to us and say, "We can have our own wells on the property, and that would be adequate." So that's why we're saying, you know, we'll do the same in both districts.
Thank you, sir. We'll go ahead and open it for debate. Seeing no motion on the mics and no raised hands, all those in favor? All those opposed?
No.
All right, since it's not unanimous, we'll go ahead and put it to a hand count. All right, all those in favor, raise your blue cards real high. 29. 39. All right, you can put your cards down. 23. You can put your cards down. So we had 39 yea, 23 nay, so the motion does not pass by a two-thirds vote. All right, last article of the evening.
We'll make this quick while you boost it.
Article 24, Definitions Townhouse.
Yes, yes, Mr. Moderator, I move the town approve Article 24 as set forth in the warrant.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, there was no action taken by the select board on this particular item, and it does require a two-thirds vote to pass.
And the planning board voted 5-0. The purpose of this was to, the definition of the townhouse was confusing between the definition and what was in the bylaw, so this clarifies the definition of townhouse as buildings with two to five units. In the definition, it says more than two, but not more than five, so some people thought that that was three to five. So this just clarifies that. Also, this allows an exception of allowing single-family units for over 55 to development by special permit. And the reasoning the planning board thought that put this into the article was, is that, this allows a developer to do a single unit, two units, three units, four units, or five units. So it gives a developer more of an option of what to do, and I just personally think that in some areas of town, to have single-unit buildings mixed in, kind of fits the town better.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Moderator, I have a motion to amend Article 25.
Okay, do you have the...
Shall I read it?
Oh, you already said that.
Article 24.
Okay.
So I move that we amend Article 25 by striking the phrase that reads...
Point of order, 24.
Sorry, Article 24, I beg your pardon. I meant to, I move that we amend Article 24 by striking the phrase that reads, quote, "Except single-family dwelling units may be allowed for 55 and older housing by special permit."
Second.
Okay, we have an amendment to strike the language in the second paragraph of Article 24 stating, "Except single-family dwelling units may be allowed for 55 and older housing by special permit." The motion's been made and seconded, we'll open it up for debate.
If I may, Mr. Moderator, may I explain why?
Sure.
So this would definitely allow developers to build single-family homes for people over 55 on much smaller parcels of land. It's, I believe it's also being inserted in this bylaw. I agree with changing the definition, it should be very clear, it should be from two to five, the way Mr. Mackey pointed out. But what happens when you insert this phrase about single-family homes is it's correcting a problem, a permitting problem, however you want to call it, misunderstanding, mistake. There's been a project already approved that didn't follow our town bylaw, and I think that we're going to pay for this down the road. I, for one, don't want my town to look like the homes across from Market Basket in Plymouth.
Thank you, Ms. Hearn.
He can go, he was looking down the aisle first.
Okay, Mr. Shea.
Ladies first.
All right.
Okay, all right, we both want to talk. Okay, I agree with Sarah. Jen Bogart, 116 Cranby Road. I'm, sorry, I write notes because I get nervous no matter where I sit. I'm on the zoning bylaw review committee with Sarah, and I don't speak for the committee, but this is a topic that we've discussed in our meetings, and the discussions have been intense, intense, and they've surrounded a specific project in town she alluded to, and the developer of this project was at our meetings, and he was very, very vocal. Because in what world is a townhouse a single-family house if you're 55 and older, but it needs two or more units if you're under 55? That's just increased density that caters to specific developers. That's special interesty to us. I've always said I do not support a bylaw if it's written for a specific project or a specific developer, and a specific developer had a hand in the literal writing of this. So I would encourage everyone to accept Sarah's motion to keep townhouses at two to five units, because if it's changed, it's being written for, because of one developer, and we need to be careful letting that happen. So support Sarah.
Thank you, and Mr. Shea.
Hi, I'm Cornelia Shea, 148 Plymouth Street. Full disclosure, I am chairman of the zoning bylaw study committee, and this is something we did look into and we did pass on to the planning board. Unfortunately, everything that was said here by both Jen and Sarah is true, that private developers have been putting a lot of pressure on and helped write these bylaws. I don't think it's the best interest of this town to do so. To put it into perspective, if you own five acres of land, you can build three traditional housing units on it. Under this, you'll be able to build 10 on five acres of land. I don't think this town is ready for this, I don't think that this town can handle the kind of influx that more or less giving land away in this town is going to come to us. There's no financial benefit due to the density of these properties. We're not saving any money on the schooling system because it's a far higher emergency services cost to the town. Closer houses, more wells, more septic, and no financial benefit, but I can assure you that five acres and up in this town are going to go very quickly if this passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. In the middle.
I'd just like to explain, this doesn't make anything any more dense than what the townhouse bylaw already has. If you have three or five acres and you can put five units on it, you can do it with a five, a pentaplex, you can do a two-family and a three-family, or you can, under this change, it would give you five separate units. So you're not getting, you're not adding any more sewage, you're not adding any more units, it's the same amount of units. You know, granted, it is spread out a little more, instead of one big tall building, you're going to have probably one-story to one-and-a-half-story buildings, and they'll be close together, and so there'll be five. So there is, there is no more density with this. But this also allows for, as the townhouse bylaw, it adds, it makes it so you have more of a, it's a more compact neighborhood, and it allows for woods and natural space around it. it. So that's why this is good, and that's why the planning board, you know, recommended this.
Thank you, sir. On the right.
So when they were discussing this...
Please state your name and address, please.
Kim Branch, two Cherry Hill Drive. So I don't agree with this bylaw either. When they were discussing it on March ninth, 2021, two of the planning board members asked it to actually be pulled from the warrant, and I believe they indicated that there was discussion that was unethical, and they wanted to bring that forward in regards to this article being specifically written for Weathervein at Patriot Pine. And when I look back at the notes for Weathervein at Patriot Pine, and they're talking about it, at some points, they're talking about fifty-four townhouses, potentially up to fifty or more rental units. And what was interesting is that they said that they would transfer these units, these affordable units, to Silver Street. So it looks like this bylaw was written for a specific opponent, but in those discussions it happened not at a public hearing, so this appears disreputable. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure who was first. Mr. Holmes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Holmes, thirteen Redtail Lane. I, too, am a member of the zoning bylaw review committee. I have a slightly different opinion, I think, than the... I don't want to speak for other members of the committee, but I had my own sort of perspective on the situation. And just a couple of things I want to point out. I know developers are not everybody's best friend, and people have their own opinions about developers, and that's perfectly fine and perfectly justified. I think in this particular instance, though, the developer was asked to provide, that's my understanding, the developer was asked to assist and provide suggestive language for the bylaw. So I don't think we should chastise the developer because they were involved in the dialogue and involved in the discussion, because I believe they were asked to be part of the discussion. But the way this bylaw is currently written, you're allowed to have a certain number of units that the bylaw dictates you can have. So let's say theoretically, you're allowed to have thirty units that meet the parameters of the bylaw. If you're allowed to have thirty units, you can have ten three-family dwellings, if you'd like, or three, we'll call them a three-family dwelling, a triplex. You're allowed to have ten of those triplexes. Those triplexes have to meet dimensional requirements and be a certain distance from each other, whether it's fifty feet or a hundred feet or whatever it is. If they're all single-family homes instead of triplexes, they have to meet the same dimensional requirements. So they're not any closer together than if they were three-family dwellings. They're the same distance apart, they have to be, by the regulation. And if, my own personal opinion is, is if I'm looking at a development in the town, would I rather look at ten three-families in a small area to preserve open space, or would I rather look at thirty single-family homes in a small area? For me personally, I'd rather see thirty small, single-family homes than ten three-families. Santana Way is a beautiful development, it looks nice, it's off of Plymouth Street, it's great. But to me, that's not the rural character we have in this town. This is a town of single-family homes. It's not a town of a bunch of triplexes, or quadplexes, or whatever a five-family is. So to me, I understand the intent here is to not create all these overwhelming developments of single-family homes, but the dimensional requirements are clear in the bylaw. It's the same whether they're triplexes or single-families. They have to be the same distance apart, so it doesn't really matter if they're single-family or three-family. It's really a matter of preference for us as a town. And if I was in a butter, I'd rather see a bunch of single-family homes than a bunch of three-families. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. On the left.
Rob Harrington, twenty-six Beaver Dam. Not incredibly sure the point of my statement, but I think that if we're looking at changing the definition or what we see as a townhouse in the town, I would want clarification whether it did before or it would under this change. My opinion would be that the definition of the word "townhouse" in our bylaws should match perfectly with the definition of the word "townhouse" in the state building codes. Because if it does not in any way, I think we're asking for trouble. So just point to be made.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. On the right.
Lot board in ten old Main Street. I respectfully have to disagree with the planning board on the density. The townhouse bylaws, there's a bump, a percentage gain for over fifty-five units of two-point-oh. So again, as Mr. Shea said, single-family homes in this town have to have an acre and a half of land. Townhouse bylaw, five-acre minimum, if there were single-family under zoning, that would be three. With the bump, it becomes ten. That's three times the number of single-family homes that should be built. We're going to see an enormous amount of five-acre subdivision lots with ten single-family homes on it. That puts us right back to half-acre zoning that we had back in the early seventies that we bumped up to thirty thousand to forty thousand to sixty thousand to be able to support individual wells and individual septic systems. And projects of what they're talking about come to the Board of Health. Speaking as a member, I would not approve them because the density is just too great. If you have the triplexes or fourplexes and you got them spread around, and you can do a common well or a common septic, that's a whole different story. How are you going to do that with ten single-family houses on half-acre lots? Doesn't work. I support Sarah's change to strike that from the bylaw.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jermaine.
It's funny that Alan Jermaine, twenty-four Pine, no one's talking about what really started this. So I'll be the bad guy. There's a project on South Meadow that was approved three times by the planning board that is in production that has been stopped because it's illegal, because the planning board should never have voted and allowed this to start with. This came to light when the attorneys for the bank, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mackey, but my understanding was, the bank shut off the second check because the project is not in conformity. So this is what's known as trying to put the horse back in the stable. And I think that this needs a little bit more understanding. Now, if I have anything wrong, please correct me, but this is what I've gotten from within the planning department and from several members on the planning board. So please tell me where I'm off the rails here. But this is what I was told started this, and why we have the developer involved in writing the bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Jermaine. Mr. Mackey?
Well, first of all, the developer didn't help us write the bylaw. He attended some of the public meetings when we were processing the bylaw, but he didn't... I mean, he gave suggestions, I guess, but he didn't actually sit down at the table with us and write the bylaw. The second thing is, is that the reason this all came about was, is when Jim Walsh became our newest planner, this subdivision was brought to his attention for some minor modifications. And then as he looked at it, he says, "I don't think that this quite fits the definition of a townhouse." This project came to us as, first, a full-fledged nineteen-lot subdivision, acre and a half lots, and the neighborhood was very upset about it. They didn't want, they were concerned about drainage, and they were concerned about seeing the houses. So this went on for a year, and then the next year, it came to us as a fifty-four lot, well, it's only one lot, or three lots, or three sections, but it's not half-acre lots. It's under the townhouse bylaw, it's just one lot. And so under the townhouse bylaw, they wanted to do over fifty-five there. The neighbors were very happy with that. And some of the houses were duplexes, and then, as we discovered later on, some of them were single-family homes. And that's what made it not obey bylaw. We didn't realize this until construction started. So, and Jim was the one that discovered, Jim thought and notified the owner of the property, saying, "You may not be able to get mortgages for these if it doesn't follow our bylaw." So that's how this happened. We weren't told by any lawyers that I know of that, yeah, that this was incorrect. But Jim just thought he'd talked to the developer, and just so that these homes, which they have two on the site now, fully built, wouldn't, you know, so that they could sell these places. So they stopped, so they have stopped. Yes, this would benefit them, but I still think it's an excellent project. All the planning board members, I believe, voted for this. So, and the neighbors were very happy about it because it was more of a conservation subdivision, and it pulled all the buildings away from the neighborhood property lines, pushed them towards the Plymouth line. And we were also told that under, you know, being fifty-five homes, the sewerage is less, produce less sewerage than, say, if you have a, homes that had families there. So the planning board thought that this was a good project, too. We only saw the two-family duplex homes, and later on, we didn't realize that they were going to build some single-family homes there, too. So that's how this all came about.
Thank you, sir. I have, on the left.
Luis Molina, twenty-two Old Center. Kind of piggybacking, can you hear me now? Kind of pigging it back in about the definition thing. If we're, if there's an issue with the bylaw, why aren't we talking about the bylaw? Why would we change the definition? Change the bylaw if you have a problem with the bylaw? A house is a house, a pond is a pond, a frog is a frog. I'm not a cat. So, right?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jermaine.
I guess my only question is through you, Mr. Moderator, maybe to counsel, or to Mr. Mackey, or to Jim Walsh. What if we vote this down? Now, that being said, there's a project going on. There's two buildings been built, there's the potential for however many more they're going to build. And the whole purpose of this bylaw, I still believe, is to put the horse back in the corral. So if this body decides to say no, and I agree with Sarah's definition, by the way, I don't have a problem taking that out. I have a problem changing the bylaw to save the development. What happens if we turn this down? How bad is the lawsuit? Because we gave them the go-ahead to start with. So we've got, there's got to be liability, and correct me if I'm wrong. Am I wrong? So we don't know?
We don't know.
Okay, so we can't have a conversation back and forth, but are you, okay, Mr. Jermaine's done. The next speaker was Mr. Shea.
Yeah, I'm just going to speak, this is my final statement. The purpose of the townhouse bylaw, and as was questioned earlier, it was brought to the zoning bylaw study committee, and we voted that more time was needed and that the townhouse bylaw should not be brought to this town meeting. It needed further study and review. But the purpose of the townhouse bylaw is to create more open space by clustering dwellings, and this seems to be rather against that point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Seeing no motion to the mics and no hands on the amendment to strike the language in paragraph two of Article twenty-four that's bolded saying, "Except single-family dwelling units may be allowed for fifty-five and older housing by special permit," this would require a majority vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it by majority. All right, back to the main motion. The main motion now has been altered by the previous amendment, striking the language that we've just discussed. So I'll open that up for discussion. Mr. Holmes?
Again, Adam Holmes, thirteen Redtail Lane. So having strucken, whatever the proper English is, I apologize. The bold language, essentially, all we're accomplishing with this article is we are changing what said "more than two" to "but less than five," or "no more than five." So more than two and no more than five to allow for two to five units. So currently, as the way it's written, is a contradiction in the bylaw that essentially says you can't build a duplex, you have to build a triplex, three, four, or five-family. By passing this article as amended, you would allow for a duplex, a triplex, a quad, or a five. So it fixes the contradiction that's in the bylaw. So if the intent of the original bylaw was to only allow three to five units, which I don't think it was, or two wouldn't have been in there, then you'd want to vote against it. If you want to vote for it, then you want to allow two to five units within a townhouse development. It's confusing, it was confusing for me as well, but I think approving this article as amended cleans up the language in the bylaw and saves us a lot of trouble down the road. It's what the original intent of the original bylaw was, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Ms. Nowon.
Gail Nowon, fifteen old Main Street. What's been circulating the last couple of years is this possible elephant in the room, and maybe somebody can help me clarify. This project on South Meadow, is that connected to the massive project that was supposed to happen at Silver Street? Are they the same people?
Yes.
Okay, so what we determine tonight with this article, will that affect how the business goes forward between those two?
All right, I'm not sure how this is, can you kind of say where you're going with this, how this is Jermaine to the article as currently amended?
Is this a stepping stone towards what we enact for that massive project that's supposed to happen on Silver Street? Is that the same business that's offering both of those developments? Yes.
So I don't think that your question is relevant to the question of the two but not more than five, at least two but not more than five dwelling units per building.
Well, it has to do with the composition of housing in Carver. If this, I don't know whether if it passes or not passes, but how can we not talk about that connection, that massive connection of how we want growth in Carver?
Sorry, but I'm failing to make the connection, so you're going to have to do a better job explaining this.
Fortunately, it already happened. We missed it.
Yeah, it sounds to me like you may be confusing what's currently on the table with the amendment, which was already voted on. So we already voted to strike the language, "Except single-family dwelling units may be allowed for fifty-five and older housing by special permit." So that's been removed, and at this point, we're just talking about one small change where we strike the words "more than" and replace with "at least," so that the full sentence reads, "Townhouses shall mean a single building or group of buildings on a single lot containing at least two but no more than five dwelling units per building," created in accordance with provisions of Section three thousand nine hundred herein.
Will what we do with this article affect the one on Silver Street? Okay, thank you very much. That's all I need to know.
Yes, sir. Ms. Harrington.
So, again, my concern with this is that, if I'm understanding at this point, what we're proposing is to say a townhouse would be two to five units. Is that correct? I do have a concern with that in the same reason I stated before. And you look on the mass.gov website, and you look at the CMR codes, and what the building code is going to be for the building, and how it's going to be constructed, and which codes need to be followed by the developer when building it. The definition of townhouse states "more than two," i.e. three or more, not to exceed five units. If we, if our definition differs by a unit from the state definition, what building code applies? code applies? Where, how does that work?
Does anybody want to answer?
Is that a rhetorical question?
No, 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 it is not. If I was the developer, and I was going to try and build this, one of these units, and I wanted a two-unit townhouse, my contract or whatever, per the bylaw, would use the term "townhouse," correct?
That's correct.
Then, having a contract using the term "townhouse," but implying a two-unit building, that term does not line up or mesh with the terminology in the codes. So the contract to build the building, so to speak, is going to contradict with what building code is to be enforced in constructing that building. The building, the permitting department for the town of Carver is not going to have a clear set of instructions to enforce to the developer, if I'm not mistaken.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. You know, I see the point that's being made. So under the state building code, a townhouse is defined as a single-family dwelling unit constructed in a group of three or more attached units, in which each unit extends from foundation to roof, and with a yard or public way on not less than two sides. So for purposes of the building code, a townhouse is three or more attached units. For purposes of zoning, if this passes, it would be two or between two and five. So if, if you were a developer, you would look at the zoning bylaw and say, "Okay, if townhouses are allowed in a particular, on a particular lot, I could build a townhouse with two units there. But then, when I actually go to build my building, I have to apply whatever building code definition fits two units, because it's not a townhouse under the state statute." So, you know, I could certainly understand why people would be confused if the two definitions were different, but they do address different things. Building code addresses building safety and requirements, whereas zoning addresses where different types of things go.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Sir, on the right.
Elevated, 148A Plymouth Street. Just curious, since we're kind of playing with words here and redefining things, and it's happened a lot lately, where else is a townhouse two units Massachusetts? Anybody know?
Mr. Moderator? South Meadow Road. We have townhouses that are two units. I think the developer called them-
I meant other than Carver, I'm sorry.
I beg your pardon?
Is that in Plymouth?
That's South Meadow Road?
You know, I mean, where else in-
South Meadow Road in Carver.
What other town?
In Carver.
How do we have a two-unit townhouse if the bylaw says three, two, more than two? I don't understand this. Usually, this kind of thing gets clearer as we go along, and they're getting a lot more confusing, I think. I guess, I was, maybe I was confusing. What I wanted to know is, we're doing something kind of illogical sounding here in redefining a term and trying to hope that it works. Gentleman said he wasn't a cat, and to my observation, he's not a cat, he still appears to be a man, whatever we call him. But in the end, if this is done elsewhere, and this is common practice, I think we should know about it, it would help us make an informed decision. If it's something that's unique to the town of Carver, then I'd kind of wonder why. So it's something I would like to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mackey?
Yeah, I'm-
And that wasn't a rhetorical question, so I was hoping for an answer.
So the question was, where else is there a townhouse that's two units?
Is there, I would think if we were going to take this step, there would be some, you know, some comparatives, some precedents, and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't, I don't know if anybody here is qualified to answer that.
Okay, so the answer is that nobody knows? Would that be a good fair answer? Okay, thank you.
Yep, we're going to go with that. Thanks. Mr. Mackey?
We do have, as Sarah had mentioned, just down the street here, we have townhouses which are two together. And we also, on Chance Court and back of Mama Mia's, there's a group of houses there that they're two together. So this was before the time that I was on the planning board, or any planning board members that I knew were there. So, I mean, this, this happened years ago. So I think that this was because of the confusion of whether the definition was two to five, or if it was more than two than five. So this has already been done in town. You know, you have state requirements, but I think that the town can, can change the bylaws from, can improve on the state bylaw. So I, I believe the town probably, I mean, since we've already had these projects before. So we do have these in town, anyway.
Thank you, sir. On the right.
This may answer the gentleman's questions, but when I Google this, the project shows up as Patriot Pines, 55-plus residential, and they listed as apartments, condominiums, the address, Carver, Massachusetts. This bylaw seems, from the planning board, specifically to this project, online, it's showing apartments, condominiums, which would have different laws. But I just thought I'd mention it for the gentleman, that gentleman. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, on the left.
Sean Bogart, 116 Cranberry Road. Can I make a motion to send this back to the planning board for a further review?
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded to send this back to the planning board for further review. All right, we will open that for debate. Seeing no motion to the mics and no raised hands, this requires a majority vote. So on the motion to refer this back to the planning board for further review, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously, so that dispenses with this article for now. I want to thank everybody for being very patient with us, and participating in this is very important for us as a town to do this, and it's a great honor and privilege to be able to participate in something like this, and I appreciate your guys' support. So thanks so much.
Oh, yeah, we need a motion to adjourn?
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the ayes have it.